Stand to the Fledge of Allegiance.
My Fledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Take attendance.
Mrs. Castle, Mr. Hirakawa, Mr. Lanacy, Mrs. Mack, Mr. String.
Do you have the agenda or additions to the agenda?
Sure, just a good evening, everyone. Welcome to our October meeting. Thank you for joining us. This is actually one of our presentation-heavy meetings, which is nice. It's actually kind of a combination of things from finance to how our students performed in the fall assessments, and we'll conclude with our report from CSR to the construction update. So very exciting. There also, for the board, there is one additional agenda, but I think you all have, which was 3.4, which was regarding athletics, which I think everybody has a copy of, correct?
Excellent. Okay, thank you. 1.3, approval of minutes from our previous meeting. We had one, September 21st, 2017. Can you make a motion?
Motion.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. All those again? 1.4, acceptance of financial reports. We have three. We have the Internal Claims Auditors Report, September 2017. We have the Monthly Treasurers Report with budget transfers, and we have the Quarterly Extra Classroom Report, adds of September 30th, 2017. Can you make a motion?
Motion.
Any questions?
Questions?
No? All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Okay. 1.5, building use. Looks like we have one, able park U suckery. Can I make a motion?
Motion.
And a second. Take it. Any questions? Any discussion?
I don't care. She took whatever we had.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? 1.6, visitors in communication that are A communications to the Board of Education. We received one thing, a thank you card from Kim Herselbets, government position. We appreciate that. That's the only thing I received. Anybody receiving anything else?
No.
No? Okay. What would be opportunity for the public to comment? Anybody sign up?
We have Mr. Jaeger, and he'd like to speak at the end.
Did you want to speak now or at the end? Doesn't matter to me.
About both.
Okay.
I just have one question. Is this able park U secret? Yeah. Ligers. What are their ages?
It's the U eight, so six and seven.
Six and seven, eight years, through six and seven grade.
Six and seven year old.
Okay. Moving on to 2.0, reports to the Board of Education. Our first one is going to be Mr. Scott Pruser, External Claims Auditor.
Oh, thank you very much. Before I start, I just wanted to thank the district office for the cooperation and courtesy throughout the audit. As you look now, the audit report is now, financials are like almost 70 pages long, and there's a lot of data to acquire throughout it. The process starts in the springtime when they're planning everything, and then we're through, we pretty much come, you know, once a month all the way through, through the summer, and then report to, you know, board in October. And I just met with the Audit Committee, went over the whole financial statement and the extra classroom report, and the district does a very good job of maintaining the records and everything. You ended up with an unqualified, unmodified opinion, which is what you want when you file the prescribed standards that are set for the school districts. You had no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and your extra classroom report was unmodified, unqualified. So those are all excellent things. Looking at your district financially, your district is doing very well. We look, I did a summary, so you don't have to flip through the 70 pages. Kind of looks at the last three years, and you look at where you're at now. Assets are 3.8 million and liabilities 1.2, and you have a fund equity of 2.6 million. So you look at just assets to your liability, you've been, you know, three to one, you know, the last three years, which is excellent. And meanwhile, you're doing a capital project in there, and you're still doing a little bunch of things. Looking at that, you still have, you know, reserves. You look at the last three years, you have reserves, and you just put more money into a capital reserve, which is very wise to do with your money. The project you did now, you're doing now, you did that, and it helps start a project. You don't have to go out and borrow it right away. So you're able to, you know, go, you know, pretty far into the project by actually borrowing, which saves the district money and taxpayers by not doing temporary borrowing. So you almost can go towards, you know, more towards the middle or the end of the project, where you actually actually have to go and borrow. I have some districts that take out bans, and you're pretty much doing it, you have to renew it every year, and every time you do it, there's legal costs and there's fiscal costs. This way, you're going in, you may have to only borrow once, which, like you said, saves, you know, taxpayers money, too. And now, you know, you already did it for this project, you also have capital reserves set aside, so whatever else comes up, you know, you're already ready for it. You also have reserves for play benefit, crew liability, insurance, unemployment insurance, workers' compensation, play retirement contribution, and tax surcharge. So you're covering any things that come to the district that aren't anticipated, you don't have to come out of your budget in those areas. Since your district's small, you can't like, you know, you actually have the 4%, so all of a sudden, you might have, you know, a bunch of special ed students, you know, hard to cover up the cost. They don't have a reserve for that, so you have to have some excess in your, you know, in there. So you do have the 4%, you still put money back towards taxes every year, looking at that. So looking at that, your, you know, district is financially in good shape. How you ended up there, this year you had over $9 million of revenue compared to 8.7 of expenditures, excess of $329,000. Looking at your revenues, you actually attained more than was budget, $78,000. Most of it was miscellaneous, which is one of those hard, you know, revenue codes to, you know, judge because it's refunds of prior expenses, refund from BOSs, anything else that might come in that's not, you know, other classified in other areas. Does it offset your state aid? You actually were income in less than what was budgeted by almost over $60,000. So it helped to offset it, and you still in a positive area. So anytime you're able to get more than what was budgeted is excellent. Looking on your expenditure side, you spent 94% of your budget, which is, those are the rates you like to look. We have 96, 97 the last couple of years for your district. So you had some room, but you had room in special education and play benefits. Those are areas that you have to have some leeway, depending if kids come into your district. I had one district had five special ed kids start September, and they didn't have them budgeted, so they had a little, luckily, they, you know, have some leeway in there, like your district does. What we like to see is that you, you know, have a strong, you know, financial condition, so you could keep your, you know, solid education program and probably provide adequate resources and facilities. And I see that by you doing your capital project, you know, you had one years ago, and now you're doing one to, you know, upgrade in the district. Another positive area is looking at your school lunch program. You had an operating profit of $15,000, bringing your fund quickly to $80,000, which is great because you look back, two years ago, you actually lost $7,500. So the last two years, you've made, you know, made a nice profit. Especially for a small district, you actually don't fund your school lunch program. It's self-sustaining, covers its benefits, actually covered, coming up this year, it was covering some of the replacements of equipment in there. I have, mostly, like, the districts we do, most of them actually, general fund has to pay, subsidize the school lunch program to keep it break even. Yours is able to sustain it on its own, so that's another positive. And another thing is you have almost $200,000 in your debt service fund. So when you do come down to your borrowing, you have money to use to help offset the principal interest in, you know, in the future. Is there any question?
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Slide button next, Mr. Carbone with NWEA fall assessment results.
So as part of our three times a year where we really look at how all of our students in the building are doing as a whole, a piece of that universal screening is the NWEA. That's an assessment of reading and math. We got started really early, I think it was the second day of school, I started having everyone through rotation, and I think it was about nine days or 10 days that we got all 380 kids reading a math through, which was a personal record. So just looking globally at our NWEA results, these are the ELA, and you'll look, the GD score, how our kids in that grade did is in blue, and the red are national norms. Those are taken, I think it was 2015 was the latest, they updated those norms. And you can see for ELA on a whole, our kids for September, and it takes into account the regression, are doing very well, right across the board. For math, GD is the first bar, which is the light blue. The norms are the darker blue. A little variability in that, and we'll touch upon that in the discussion at the end. But you can see, we had some that were equal, some areas, like our eighth graders, there's a pocket, and our current third grade was above the norms, which was nice to see. So we do all of that. Now, the important part is what do we do with it? So this is what we've done already. The data team has met, well, the data team is essentially Mrs., or Dr. Yodis, Mrs. Herselbets, myself, and all of the AIS RTI providers, classroom teachers, and we meet with all the teachers to review the results of this test and the New York State testing results. Any child who scored below the 20th percentile on the NWEA, we looked at and had discussions about providing some extra support. And the New York State test, the New York State had a prescribed formula and a number to use to figure that out. Students who met the criteria for AIS RTI were identified, and Dr. Yodis sent letters home to those families. The data team, our next job is we'll schedule meetings with all the classroom teachers, and we're going to look at digging in, like specifically, what were the areas that our students are really successful with and what areas are some weaknesses? So then that information can be used by the support providers and the classroom teachers to really drill down and attack those skills. The data results will also be used to utilize, to assist teachers in determining specific areas to challenge our higher achieving students. You know, in the classroom, we have a broad range of students, so we want to see, you know, what areas that we can support and encourage and increase the rigor in that area. Just as a note, for the 17, 18 school year, staffing changes were made to better align individual strengths with areas of needs within our building. So that bottom bullet was a reflection of how some of our scores were progressing. So we'll do this again in January, and then we'll have another comparison on how our students are doing. But you have a copy of that as well.
Any other paper copies, great.
Yes. Thank you.
It's great. Thank you.
Ms. Carbone, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well facilitated.
Okay. Up next, CSR with the capital project update. Looks like we've got two gentlemen here, Scott and Kyle.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. This is fresh off the press, so I'm going to hand it out and just kind of highlight it to you, so you don't have to take the time to read it. I apologize for the lateness of that, but we wanted to include some last-minute information in the financial picture. It's an easy read.
You're welcome.
Yes, certainly. There's a couple there, but yeah, I think there's one more. Okay. So I can tend to talk a little fast, so I'll get through this pretty quickly. Since the last time we addressed the board, a lot of things have happened. The summer has come and gone, so the chronology, the way this is written, is kind of starting in May. We kicked off the project by mobilizing in May, excuse me, approximately the middle of June, the actual onsite work activities began. The activity started with the back of the property, where the retaining wall is installed now for the two-story addition. The access road had to be augmented in the rear of the building. The contractor had a small hiccup with procuring some of the retaining wall that came from New Hampshire. Once that was in place, the materials arrived here in July, and it's installed as you see it today. One of the other things that took place in June was a 10-day notification posting in the building, so that we could proceed with the abatement of asbestos-containing materials as soon as the school was out. So as soon as the school was out, the last week of June, that process began, and areas of the building were cordoned off, and abatement processes took place, removing asbestos-containing material, you'll see ACM is an acronym in here, from pipe insulation and debris in the crawl spaces, which has been there for some time that we cleaned up, both to clean up the building and to facilitate areas for construction, because nobody else could work there until it was cleaned up. So several of the crawl space areas have been taken care of in that regard. The gymnasium has been bisected in part by a temporary wall. It's been constructed, as you're all aware of, where the new stage will be present in your future on that end of the building, so that when school came back to session, they could continue using the gymnasium space. A little bit out of order here, I think everybody's been in there and heard, or not heard, appreciated the reduction of the noise in there. I think some good choices were made there. We've gone 80% with what has to be done there in the physical state, and you can, meaning that there's some balancing left to do that'll take place over the holiday break this year, but it's significantly reduced in noise. So congratulations to the engineers who figured out how to do that. Excuse me. The boiler room has received new heating pumps, circulation pumps, as well as some other mechanical equipment. The corridor ceilings, I'm sure you're aware, and I'm sure you saw, were removed in both the first and second floor, or ground floor and upper floor, so that infrastructure could be run throughout there, because this part of the building feeds that part of the building with respect to hot water, domestic water, electrical service, et cetera. Ceilings were put back together after all that. Lighting book put back in place, new lighting around the locker alcoves. I'm sure you can, if you haven't been through there, please do. It's bright, okay? And part of that will be finishing with the actual new lockers that are to be replacing the existing in the future here. They're a long lead item, so as we told you back when the decision was made to go forward with that, you wouldn't see those installed until the holiday break, with all likelihood. So a lot of mechanical, electrical plumbing, you'll hear me see MEP, that's what that represents. Removals took place in various amounts here, with removing old fans, old heating cabinets, light fixtures, and things like that. The bookroom down on the very end of the corridor was emptied out and removed to make access for the, where it connects to the building addition in the future. Outside, sidewalks were removed and replaced around the main entrance, the gymnasium, and the nurses' area, so that they are now ADA compliant with the new installations. Electrical distribution, mechanical distribution, including smoke detectors, fire alarm components, certain occupancy sensors and things like that have been upgraded as well, too. The gymnasium received new fin tube radiation around the perimeter of their, of the space. However, the covers, that cover that up, are on order. They were special order, that have to be installed as soon as they get here. It'll only take a couple of days to get them in once they're here. And as I stated earlier, the ready rock, ready rock is a brand name, the retaining wall, the giant concrete blocks, is installed as you see it now. I'm told you see it from the road down below, but I've almost hit somebody driving by and looking up, so I'm not doing it anymore. I'll take it from what I can see up here. The installation took about three weeks, all told, once the materials were here. So now the, more of the put-back items, we talked a lot about the removals and the demolition components. The air conditioning in the computer lab was replaced and put into service. As I mentioned earlier, domestic services, electrical services were installed in anticipation of the addition, and some of the areas within the building that were upgraded. Mechanical items such as fans replaced, serving the kitchen hood, and the existing radon removal system in Area A, some of the piping was modified with a new fan on the roof installed and put back into service. There are also new radon removal components in, call it Part B of a system, that are scheduled for installation in the new portion of the building when it is constructed. Excuse me. Some of the, a couple of the interior spaces received new air conditioning, such as the MDF room and the electrical closet, the one down near the music room, to help cool those areas where there's servers and other equipment. Temperature controls have been implemented and upgraded to control all this equipment that I mentioned. Very large condensing unit was installed on the main part of the roof that also serves the computer lab, the equipment in the computer lab. That's probably the heaviest load in the entire building. Couple other exhaust fans were replaced, and as I mentioned before, the final balancing in the gym will take place during the holiday recess. The one thing that we did come across, that you're aware of, is the exterior walls of the gymnasium and the bookroom, book storage room, contain vermiculite. Vermiculite is considered a hazardous material by the Department of Health, so once it was encountered, it had to be removed in order to facilitate a very giant hole in the wall that will become the stage. So that has been completed. Excuse me. I'll note that the charge of the capital project is not to make the entire building free of any hazardous materials, but if we encounter something along the way in the path of construction, we certainly have to address it head-on, and the building is better for it. The startup of the equipment took place, and everything was online in time for opening school on time. No delays there in any way, shape, or form. Things get worse before they get better, so things appeared torn apart in August. A big cleanup effort, great cleanup effort by the school staff behind the contractors for final cleaning and setup took place, and school opened on time. The kids came, no matter what, they were coming. So also out back, you'll see that, if you haven't noticed it, the asphalt drive to the rear has been saw cut, and a trench obviously placed in there. Code required that a new fire hydrant be installed towards the rear of the building, extending the coverage area. That asphalt will be placed to repair that when the fire access road in the back of the school is constructed. In discussions with the district, as long as it's maintained or maintained to be in a plowable condition for this winter, it's acceptable to do all that paving next year at one time, working our way out of the area. Don't want to put down new paving, then we drive it over with trucks. It's just not a good way to go about it, if we can avoid it. Excuse me. Once the retaining wall was done and in place, then the excavation and placement of the foundation for the addition began. Because of the soils in that area, they had to be filled, compacted, tested to a point of acceptability before you could actually start construction of the building. So it kind of sounds silly, but you had to backfill the wall, bring it up to grade. Once everything gets the thumbs up, then you can dig it out and start your foundation work. And that's what took place. Pardon me. The foundations took place over recent weeks with the last pour on October 4th, bringing it up to grade. Right behind that, we were able to then install the underground natural gas extension that comes from this end of the building by the boiler room down to that end, by where the addition will receive that new gas service. The gas service will feed units down and that end of the building, heating the stage area, the classroom areas, and is there for expansion should any additional work occur in the gymnasium, the rooftop units that we had talked about in the past. So there's plenty of gas service now. There's a force main, sanitary force main that's scheduled for installation this week, scheduled for tomorrow, actually. Tomorrow's the 20th, to take place. That may or may not happen. It's not mission critical that it occur before any other thing in particular that's on the immediate horizon. It may get pushed to next week, but that was the planned for date, so there'd be some additional excavation around the back. And then lastly, and most recently, CMU, Concrete Masonry Units, also known as Block, arrived, they got set up, their mortar towers are out back, and they began laying some of the firewalls or demising walls that marry up against the existing building. Kyle can explain exactly what those are and why they're there. Just real quick, referring to the photographs that are attached to this report, I'll run through them quickly, same chronology that I just recited, clearing and excavation for the retaining wall, a new fan replaced on the radon removal system. You can see, if you look closely enough, miles of pipe and wires in these corridor ceilings, very tight, a lot of material packed into some very tight quarters above those ceilings. And then new heating pumps that were installed in the boiler room. Top left on the next page, page five, you can see this large air conditioning condensing unit that I mentioned, a pretty big crane that had to set that in order to pick it all the way back to the middle of the building, pretty substantial. And again, that serves ultimately the computer lab, mirrored up to some other equipment inside the building. Rooftop view of replaced concrete sidewalks outside the gym area that are now ADA compliant. And the bottom two photos are indicating the vermiculite removal associated with de-selective demolition. You can see the outline of what becomes the opening for the stage into the gym from this vantage point. Last page. It's not last page. I get to get to the financials here. Here, a couple shots of the ready rock retaining wall, top left, exactly what I was describing a moment ago, how the interior portion had to be brought up to grade in specific lifts. Third-party monitoring company tested the compactions in the specified lifts, and you can see where then subsequently, foundation work took place after the wall was completed. Going to the financial components, page seven, you'll see the status of contracts. I know I walked you through this once before, but I'm going to pretend I didn't, and it's been a little while. Take a moment here. We have four prime contracts. Number one is not used, just to satisfy your curiosity here. Two through five, we have at the top of the columns, the original contract and the approved changes resulting in a revised contract value. changes resulting in a revised contract value. We also include the invoice to date amounts in that, in a calculation of what that is on a percent paid. The percent gives you kind of an idea of how far along their scope for work is relative to completion. If something's 50%, then you get an idea that they're about halfway done with their work. So just below that, you see the in-contract contingency allowances that are contained within each contract. We started off with $80,000, $25,000, $30,000, and $50,000, $15,000 respectively. Next column, you can see the amounts expended. The contract zero-two, general construction, that was expended at the expense of the vermiculite abatement, okay? Now, once that is exhausted, the in-contract allowance is exhausted, then everything becomes a change order, not an allowance disbursement. I'll talk about that in just a moment. So the far right column, there are just pending items. These are things that we know exist or are coming or are under negotiation or not reconciled for a final value and therefore not processed forward. We always put the most conservative number in there so that we're looking at a maximum real number. The top number, the large number that's in parentheses, is a credit. This is going back to the respective value engineering efforts that took place to get the contracts. There's that volume of work that is still under scrutiny for processing that is not quite ready for to be processed, and we can get into the hows and whys of that in just a moment. Pages eight and nine are each respective contract, and it picks up the changes, change orders processed since the last report. Right here in front of you, you'll see removal of vermiculite at the gym wall, the $42,000 number. Because the total sum was what it was, we exhausted the in-contract contingency allowance coupled with this volume of work, of monies outside of the contract. So it's par-rated between the two documents to equal one sum. There were none for the mechanical contractor, and just a couple for the electrical and plumbing contractors respectively here. These were some of the deletion items that we've talked about in the past, and I added the word delete here to the description so that they're fairly intuitive. You're aware of these, but I'll recap them. The 4005, the add, was the electrical component to the fix in the gym, quite honestly. There was a mechanical component and an electrical component. The other two numbers, 4006 and 4007, were some of the deletions that were elected earlier on, and those are the executed numbers. Down in the plumbing sector, the first one is a modification which resulted in some reduced piping, so there were some savings there, $1,800, and the bottom two were deletions of sculpt that were previously reviewed with the board. All right? Brings us to the last page, and then I will cease my rhetoric, some people call it rhetoric. Okay, the summary. The original contracts were 4, 5, 6, 3, 287. The approved changes, these are numbers carried back from the forward pages, 41 to 87, resulting in the adjusted contracts as of right now, 4.604, okay? So just kind of the chronology calculation, the voter authorized referendum was 5, 139, 788. Subtract the adjusted contracts, subtract the incidentals budget, which is set aside, and you would add or subtract the pending items estimate. In this case, it's a negative number because those value engineering numbers are still being vetted, reviewed, resulting in right now a negative 267.9, call it 268. And that is a number that I know you folks were looking for for other reasons, so if you take that number, that's the real numbers in hand, and you add to it what you feel you need to for certain items or contingencies or other factors that may come into that equation, and you'll get to what you're looking for. I'm not sure if this is the time for that discussion, but I wanted to let you know exactly where we are, okay?
Overall, as far as like last complete full week, we on schedule from, you know, last Friday.
Are we on schedule from last Friday?
Meaning project?
Financially or projects?
No, no, from time.
Oh, time, 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 time.
That's the only thing I don't see.
We are, we were in good shape, but we have a concern that we want to share with the board in another dialogue that may have some impacts. Short of that, yes, we were good. All the work, and let me capture that by saying that all the work that was planned for this summer passed, was executed, okay? And there is work that is planned for next summer specifically, and then there's the in-between, which is the addition, okay? So in very short order, the answer was yes.
Okay.
Okay? Any other specific questions relative to this report?
Just to recap, the 268 is void of any contingency. That's just the true deficit.
Correct. As far as an outside contingency. The only thing remaining contingency-wise, to your point, is what's remaining in in-contract allowances, which you can take from page, excuse me, page seven.
Just the other three, the other three.
Number two is exhausted, number three, four, and five still have values in them, okay? I just wanted to make sure you're clear on how to follow that. It can be confusing.
That's the total contingency?
In-contract contingencies remaining with the other trades.
Right, so they weren't bid, they're allowed under contract, but we-
They're included in their bid.
So they're not contingencies in terms of we don't have to come up with more money for them?
No, 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 they are, the in-contract contingencies, and let me go back and explain real quick. The contingency, the premise of the contingency is the way we structure these capital projects is there is in-contract contingency and out-of-contract contingency, equating to somewheres between four and three-quarter and 6%, just based on history and type of project. We include about half, a third to a half of that in contracts, so that's where the in-contract contingency comes. The other half of that would be a line item in an out-of-contract contingency, okay? We have exhausted the in-contract contingency for the general contractor only, not for the other three trades. Any in-contract contingency not utilized, and the reason for the in-contract contingency is primarily for unforeseen field conditions, okay? It's not to be used for elective items. If those are conscious decisions that are made by the owner outside, it would be funded with an out-of-contract contingency or other funds so it doesn't deplete what's there set aside for the things you can run into, unforeseen, you know, pipe in the wall that you didn't know, kind of stuff. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions relative to firewalls? We do have an issue that I think needs to be talked about in a separate dialogue, and if you want to get to that, we can, that's why Kyle's here, to be specific.
Yeah, so, no, no, this is something different.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
This is talking about change orders.
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry. Let me give one parting comment so that you can, yeah. There was some, it was brought to our attention, there were some concerns with why aren't certain things progressing? That $99,000 unresolved credit number from the value engineering. I asked Kyle to bring a couple of examples from our office of why some of the other ones have been processed and why some of them are still hanging out there and not processed because we're not satisfied with certain things. So I wanted to dispel any concerns there by showing that, you know, we're exercising our regular due diligence on your behalf to make sure that everything is accounted for before we sign off on it. So with that said, if Kyle could give an explanation to that, please.
So throughout the process, we have put together a list of value engineering items, and the board has made agreement to go forward on those. I want to give an update. So today, we have 17 cost proposals from the GC. Three of them have been accepted. 14 have been rejected a number of times due to not enough backup material. There's still 11 items they have not submitted since day one. We're still waiting on lockers, skylights, so it's unfortunate we can't get you that information, we have not received that today. But I did want to hand out examples of some of the information that we're receiving as the struggle to get the information to you on time, examples of two different contracts. These are examples of cost proposals that we typically would see. Before you go through them, I want to go through them with you one at a time. So one of the, the main reason that we're slow to get you any kind of information is the lack of information in these, okay? So on the top one, what you see is a campito, it's a mechanical contractor on this project. This is a typical change order proposal that we would expect to see. One, we want to see this because we want backup information on labor and material so that when we present it to the board, we can honestly say that we accept this change order. And two, SED is looking for this as well. If we get a change order and there is no backup information that looks odd, SED will flag it at the end of the project, and they will basically, they will, they'll come up to not be aided in the project, okay? After the campito is, this is a three-part example. This is a GC example. The very top page, it's a front and back. This is the kind of information that we're not looking for, is a general material and labor, two line items. So an example of this is, this was an $8,900 change order. When I saw it, it was flagged on our end, one that it was seen too high, and two, there's no backup information. The next page is an example of their backup information, which is good to see. The type portion is the actual material cost. If we don't get information on an actual quote from a company, we also start to question that. So the information is read, is the research that CSARCH has done on each product, and you will see the cost difference between what was proposed and the cost that we found, all right? So that has been brought back to the contractor, rejected, all right? Two weeks later, we get another sheet with similar, no backup information, $2,000 less, okay? This was rejected with no backup information, and then finally, a month later, we receive another one that is over $4,000 less than the total $8,000 cost they tried to ask for. This one was accepted because we knew the backup information anyways based on the sheet that had the read information. So this is, this is what we're going through right now. It seems like a lot of paperwork. We believe that, that it's needed, one, to protect the district and from overpaying, and two, to get aid at the end of the project. So we are currently going through that process, we're not going to change our process, and hopefully we can get some information back to you guys about your value engineering and any other additional costs as soon as possible.
If I could just add, it's not just because we want to justify it. All these requirements that we're asking of are part of the contract requirements, they're in the project manual, there's protocols to be followed, and they just aren't, so we're taking them back. It doesn't end to just a fact-checking as Kyle mentioned for our own research on true cost of items, but it's a matter of following a protocol, and everybody has to do it. It's not just one contractor, it's all contractors. So I just want to point that part of it out.
Do you have any questions on this information handed out?
I do have one question, just on a sheet that we normally see, which is the value engineering sheet, because is there anything that needs to be decided upon coming up or anything like that?
Nothing has changed since that last review in August, okay, no, August, I'm sorry, earlier in the summer. Nothing new.
Can't leave up any other old items.
Those, all of them, right. All of those items that were decided upon at the last time, last time they were visited have been issued by CIC, addressed to the contractor by CIC's changing condition, which starts the proposal process. They are all, I don't want to say encumbered, but identified in the pending number that I show here. I know it's just one number that shows pending. I have the backup data to show all of that, but it's all in there. Just by example, this list makes up all those items included in that number, which embodies the items on that spreadsheet you're talking about.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure you don't need a decision from us or anything.
No, if there's any items that come up during construction that we feel could be of value engineering, we will bring it up to you, all right, as construction goes along.
Actually, to recap on Eric's question, so at this point, I do believe we made all necessary decisions, though.
Correct.
If there wasn't anything outstanding, I think we pretty much ruled everything a yes or no, right?
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Correct.
Everything that was on the table has been run to the end.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr.
Appreciate that.
Okay. 2.2, District/Superintendent Program Report. Dr. Green.
Sure. For the most part, you'll hear a lot of building updates, and what's kind of nice about this month's presentation is you kind of get to see what we've been up to. So in terms of assessments, Stephanie Carbone presented the data that we've been working with, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Yost and a bit of kind of what's been happening in more the building level. On the district level, just as a reminder to those of you that know, your children are off to school tomorrow, there is reason for that, and that is basically we're doing a regional PD day with Questar III. So basically, I believe it's 11 or 12 schools are participating right now, and they are also closed as well, so we can basically do a collaborative event using a variety of locations. So Gulf Middle School, Columbia High School, Rensselaer City, the Sakati Center. Basically, really, it's great for us because it's a smaller school that really only has one or two teachers in each grade level or department, this is a chance to actually collaborate with others outside of the district. So that'll take place tomorrow, throughout the whole school day, so that's there. You'll also, those are the next couple of weeks, we'll be getting ready for Veterans Day, we'll be getting that celebration memo out to the community as well, so that's another kind of district level piece we're excited to do. We're very excited this year, we're kind of tackling that with a K-8 approach, really kind of having everybody involved in that, so it's not just a singular event, but it really involves the whole school and community, so that's something we've been working on as well. Building level-wise, I'll have Dr. Yost kind of elaborate more on what's happening on the day-to-day.
To be back off of that, with Dr. Green was talking about the Professional Learning Day, there are actually 15 school districts that we will be working with tomorrow, and I believe there are 2,200 teachers, educators, working together. So I think it is a really nice opportunity for our teachers to mix with that many other educators, to share ideas and just learn from each other, which is great. In that spirit, I'm going to jump and just talk about instructional rounds. I've talked to you a little bit about that as the process, this is an initiative that we are taking, this year we started last year, and instructional rounds is educators going to other school districts to look at what's going on, really sitting in their classrooms, taking observation, notes data, and then taking that collective data and looking at best practices and how we can bring them back here. So it's an initiative that is great, Questar's trying to get it off the ground. We had a few teachers, it's a two-day training for a teacher to be able to have this kind of certification throughout to train confidentiality, and there's a lot that goes into the training. We had a handful of, maybe eight teachers last year trained for the two days. A group of three other teachers and myself went out to Richmond or Richfield Springs, which was about an hour and a half west of here, and we actually did a rounds visit and you attend several classrooms as you're in there for the day, and then you're going back as a group, and there were 20 educators looking at all the different classrooms and looking at themes of the whole building. And there's a problem of practice that the school will give you, you know, what they want you to hone in on when you're in those classrooms, and what are you looking for. It might be questioning, or were the questions rigorous enough, or was there enough wait time for students to respond? So that was our day, it was amazing, we came back, we shared out here at GD over Superintendent's Conference Day this September, well, August. We had the whole staff trained for one full day, and we were excited to share out with our staff that we are hosting a visit here November 1st. There'll be 20 educators, and they're coming from Brittenkill, Rensselaer, Middleburg, and Herkimer County. So a team of 20 will be here all day on November 1st, going into as many classrooms as you can see to look at our problem of practice. And like, it's not so much a problem, but a problem for us, as we say, you know, we always remain around the average, or our state testing, NWA testing, how do we get, you know, above above? How do we get our students who are just proficient to, you know, even more proficient? And what is it that's stopping that? And are we providing a rigorous, you know, instruction in all academic areas? And what are some of those types of differentiation we're doing for accelerating students or remediating them? So that's a problem we're letting, you know, throwing out to them, and then they will come in and spend the day. And at the end of the day, we'll receive a lot of feedback that Dr. Green will go through, and then he'll provide some recommendations that they think would help us in our district here, as well as the takeaways from each of those 20 educators who perhaps saw something really neat in the classroom, or saw something in our environment, in our district, that they will take and use in their own district. So we're really exciting and excited about that, and that'll be November 1st, so I'll let you know next morning evening how the visit went, but we are hosting, which is a pretty big deal, and exciting that we are one of the first schools in Questar to actually host, and what they're hoping is that more districts in our Questar or CAP region will get on board with this so that we won't be driving an hour and a half to go see a district that the districts, our neighboring districts, will be sharing back and forth with us. So really good information on that. The Health and Wellness Fair we had last Thursday was awesome, so thanks to Trish Gibbs and Jennifer Price and all the faculty and staff and community who supported that event. It was just great, it's just nice to see. The Health and Wellness Fair we had last Thursday was awesome. So, thanks to Trish Gibbs and Jennifer Price and all the faculty and staff and community who supported that event. It was just great. It's just nice to see, you know, different community folks out here and supporting GD and our students and teaching them safe and wellness activities, and it was great. So, thank you. Good for me.
Thank you. Do you want to add?
Sure. You know, so actually, that, I made a very nice transition into the principal's report, but I actually realized I missed something kind of big, so I do apologize for that. So, kind of to dial back a bit, if we may, we want to thank you for your presentation, kind of the update of the construction project. So, one of the questions for the board to consider, and this was something we discussed probably in the past couple of months, but really, I think we decided this was a good time to kind of really maybe circle in on what we wanted to do, was as CSARCH has made us aware, we are in a little bit of a deficit with the project as it stands right now, that 268 I rounded up to. So, the board's been kind of looking at, and again, to update the public, at examining how we can close that deficit. And to recap, we, from our original report from the auditor, we do have a substantial, solid capital reserve that we do have because of our financial prudence, which has been great. So, the board has the option of closing that deficit rather than cutting back the project by using capital reserve funds without any impact on the taxpayer. It's a matter of transferring those funds, though, to basically raise the bond. In 2014, the public approved a $5,139 million project. Turns out, the project is basically about $268,000 more, obviously, four years later, some things we've kind of added in. So, basically, the board has the option of adding, making that transfer, but to do that transfer, it does require voter approval, even though it is still a 0% tax impact. But basically, the board has determination of basically, number one, do they want to supplement that deficit with capital reserve funds that we do currently have? And number two is, how much do they want to supplement that number with? That exact number, less, more? And basically, the process then goes from there, because once again, that does have to be voter-approved, even though it really is a transfer, it's almost like a budget transfer, but because it is raising the overall bond, that is something that does have to go after the voters at some point, whether that's- and that can be determined also by the board. There's a 45-day window when you make the decision to do it, to when you go to the public, but of course, that is up to the board. And so, to provide some information, if that's helpful, and then, of course, I'll turn it over to you guys, is again, as you heard from Scott Proust and through our budgeting pieces, and through Bell and I, and again, Bell, congratulations, you've done a wonderful job with Denise in keeping me all very solid, so thank you. But to point out, we do have, as you will see, about $900,000 in the capital reserve fund as it is. One of the pieces I do want to point out, as the board considers this, is that regardless of how much you add, once again, one of the pieces that made us in great financial shape years ago was we didn't have to borrow as much in the end. So, originally, the project was budgeted 5,139 million. The district is going to fund that with 1.5 million of its own money and then borrow the rest. In the end, it doesn't mean the district has to borrow the remainder of 5,139 million minus 1.5. So, once again, the number you put towards, for example, if it's 268 for that deficit, if the district decided that maybe $400,000 is a solid number to transfer, it's not a matter of losing that money, it's just a matter of putting down more towards that debt in the end. So, again, we're still hoping to come back ahead anyway, because we have a solid capital reserve, but that money isn't lost. So, it's not a matter of, well, if you transfer 268 or 270, and you only need 268, that 2,000 is lost. It just goes in paying down the principal's, so just to throw out there for consideration.
Well, I would definitely want to go more, just in case we run into something else. As long as I can pay down the debt, right? So, I would probably go with 500,000, just to throw a number out, is what I would propose.
It's not like we're borrowing money.
Right.
It's just our money.
Just moving it somewhere else.
Sure the public knows that, and we're okay with that.
So-
We can decide another number now. Is that what you're looking for?
No. We just, it's 45 days that we have to give before we would put out a vote to the public. So, you could even-
45 days from what?
Do we have to have a hearing?
Yeah.
You would have to have a hearing, and that can be included as a board meeting as well. So, that can be part of a board meeting, but you would require 45 days' notice of that vote. So, you could either incorporate that as part of what would have to be sooner. It could be a, it could be part of the budget vote, it could be attached as another-
In May.
You know, in May. But if you felt that was maybe awkward to put that within the budget vote, it could take place, once again, from the time you have a hearing or a board meeting, in our case perhaps, you know, 45 days after. You're just basically making that announcement, putting it out to the public for that transfer.
So, we could definitely think on it and talk about it next meeting as well, see if anything else pops up.
Absolutely.
You just never know.
Is it at least 45 days' notice?
At least 45 days, yes. That's, I mean, you certainly could get more, and certainly, you could, by all means, the board could determine a number and then say that will be on the ballot in, in May with the regular budget vote. If there's, there's any permutation of ways you could do this, it's just a matter of maybe at some point, making sure that- right now, as you know, we are able to pay our expenses through the capital reserves. We haven't had to borrow yet, which is a great thing, and I think we can put off borrowing as long as possible. That puts us in a better spot, because we're not banning, right, or banning, or say, we're bonding. So, rather than kind of capturing it in a, we might borrow between this window and this window. If we can push that borrowing off until the very end and borrow just what we need and just lock into that one interest rate, I think we're in good shape. Well, Bell, am I wrong?
No, that's correct.
And if I understand what a ban is, that's basically borrowing money to get our money later on.
Yes. To get you through until you bond.
We don't need to do that.
We don't need cash. We have cash. We have cash to take us, well, yes, cash, exactly. To take us pretty much, as you can see, obviously not through the entire project, but as we get into steel and more expensive items, you would probably want to deplete that before you really, you know, but you want, you kind of want to have those kind of overlap, I think, rather than, well, when you start to deplete the capital reserve, that's when you really went to bond rather than ban, like you said. And that's a one-shot legal cost, because there's some legal costs that go with that. You're doing it one time rather than multiple times, so. So, perhaps for the board, maybe you want to continue to discuss, and we can table it.
Anyone opposed to that?
Sounds good. So, we'll make it maybe our mental note to make a decision, a formal decision in November, then we can also talk how we'd want to proceed with, regardless of that amount. If you want to proceed with a, again, minimal 45-day notice, or would that be something in the winter, in the spring? Again, whatever works for you guys. End of the public, of course.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Okay. Getting back to our agenda. 2.4, PTA update. I see Sue in the audience. I know you're not the president anymore, but-
Thanks, I'll be speaking on her behalf. She provided a pretty detailed agenda here on the press. So, when Nicole and Jessica were here last month, they described that we had 88 current members of the PTA, and I'm happy to announce that as of today, we have 150. That included a recent deduction of the entire Teachers Association, as well as some pending memberships, I think due to the health care with the North Fremont Police Department and some other businesses who have not been mentioned. That's very exciting. Some completed fundraisers for the fall have been our Yankee Candle fundraiser, the catalog, and then the apparel sale, and we just recently, this week, had school pictures. We've got some supported events that have also recently ended. We have supplied the school with our, every year, we provide them with the Arts and Education Fund. So, it's very exciting to get that. Sometimes that gets lost in the whirlwind of things, so Bell's got that in her hand already. Correct? Okay, great. We've started our school banking, which is a PK-supported event, as well as the science crew, which started last week. We also then supported the Health Safety and Wellness Fair. That's a mouthful. We've, it looks like Nicole, who is the president, and Paul, who's the vice president, recently attended a GD teachers' meeting, which was very exciting, so that's nice. They discussed accommodating some more of the teachers' needs and how to move the meetings around so maybe we can get some more attendance from teachers. And they also just discussed a few different things that we'll talk about. All right. Then we've got an upcoming, this is kind of exciting, too. Dr. Yotis and Nicole Hermanic are looking to attend the New York State PT Regional Presidents' and Principals Dinner at the end of the conference next week. So, that's fun. Thanks for that. We've recently funded some field trips. We had first grade today, kindergarten, excuse me, I'm in second grade now. I'm sorry. I take that back. Second grade was today. We've also had kindergarten and first grade in the last couple of weeks. Let's see, we've got some, three of the five PK officers have recently attended some trainings. I know the treasurer attended one, and I don't know who else, but we'll talk about that later. We've got some details. I know she, we're going to meet, because it looks like, although we were a little hesitant to initially sign on to the PTA because of the fly-by-the-seat-of-the-pants, the way we operated over the last two decades, which seemed to somehow work for us. It looks like there are some tighter restrictions, which we are held to, and so, we were going to just try to read through all of that and lift some of that weight and pressure off of her shoulders, so she'll feel a little bit more at ease. So, we policy, can be kind of pop through there. We've got our next upcoming meeting, November 13th. I think, believe that's on Monday at 7:00 o'clock. So, Tuesday meetings are no longer, we've now switched to Mondays, if that happens to open up anybody's schedule. We've got some November fundraisers coming up, our original artwork, so it's a good one, through the Mrs. Mitchell and the kids' artwork. And this is a very exciting one. We're bringing back Restaurant Night, which we've discussed before, where I believe it started with Lombardi's, where you go to the restaurant and you receive a percentage of profits. So, Muscatella's will be giving us 20% of all profits by anybody that we send away, and that will be held on November 9th. So, that's fun. Hayes Academy of Taekwondo is also doing their upcoming sponsorship, where they provide a certain number of their students that sign up for a 60-year period. And Yankee Trail's Santa's Magical Express is arranged for November 30th, which is a Thursday this year. Who knew driving around in a bus in Rensselaer could be so much fun? But I hear that's a great time. And then we are also preparing for the holiday shop. So, that's not my favorite three days, but apparently, it's a big hit at the school, so.
It's a hit, yeah. I just like it. Yep.
So, I have a couple of comments for PTA, and I kind of want to give you just a little bit of challenge. Hopefully, I can come to your next meeting on November 13th. One of the goals of the board, we came up with five goals for this year, and one of them is to heavily look at our demographics and to see if we're meeting the need of all of our demographics. And so, I would like to challenge both SEPTA and PTA to look and see how we can increase our lower socioeconomic status children to get into bowling, science crew, Lego club, and any other, you know, type of events that are not free. I personally thought $56 for science crew was a little steep. And I understand it's a fundraiser, but not everything has to be a fundraiser.
Actually, I don't believe that one is.
It, oh, well, it said it on something. I forget what, maybe an email from-
I don't think we gave any of that.
From Lisa Williams. But still, PTA has a lot of money, and they could subsidize. They can absolutely subsidize some of those costs. So, just a challenge, not, you know, just maybe you could brainstorm different ways, not just to subsidize with money, but how, how can we even just let them find out about it and get them involved? Because it seems, you know, that they're not, so. A little challenge. I like it. Do you want me to give SEPTA update? I just have three things, since we're doing like PTA stuff. So, we have 68 members for Special Ed PTA. We had 40, about 44 to 45 kids at our Lego night, Leo event. So, it was our first event, so we're pretty excited that, you know, we had that many children there. Tomorrow, we're going to Liberty Bridge on the day off. We thought it'd be fun to get kids together, you know, on the, on the day off. We have 14 kids and nine adults going. The price is $9.50 per person, should anyone else like to come. We're meeting at 11:00 o'clock at Liberty Bridge. And our next meeting, didn't decide yet, right? Still waiting. Yeah. So, it'll be in November, but we haven't picked it exactly yet. So, that's what I have to say.
Sue, I got a question for you. You had the, you guys were trying to figure out what to do, chuckle gym equipment or whatever. Anything, any progress I'm looking on that?
The last I heard, and Tom, you can correct me, I think you and Paul were sort of discussing different tactics.
Yes. Tactic is the perfect word, maybe how to avoid the very expensive overhead costs of installation, some creative ways, maybe. So, we're still playing around with that.
All right. So, no answer yet. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Sue. Thank you. Percy. Moving on. Acquisitions and authorizations. Point one, approve the CSC, CPSE recommendations as attached. Someone make a motion. Any questions? Comments? Questions?
Mr. Herakawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.2, approve Amanda Barrett to the position of Teaching Assistant in the tenure area of Teaching Assistant, effective August 31st, 2016, with four-year probationary term, plus 27 child-rearing days, commencing on September 26th, 2020. Need a motion? Motion?
Second.
Questions? Discussion?
Just to point out, this is a current employee, but basically, she did take a leave of absentee, returnee leave, so her tenure date gets pushed up, so that basically, it's just a motion that will allow us to push her tenure date up 27 days.
Mr. Herakawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.3, accept the designation of Anthony Champlin from the position of Bus Driver, effective October 11th, 2017. Need a motion? Motion?
Second.
Question, your discussion?
Mr. Herakawa?
Yeah.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
Still posted, if anyone's interested, too. We do new drivers.
3.4, approve the memorandum of understanding regarding athletic participation between the Wanningsville Union Free School District and the April Park Central School District. Need a motion?
Motion.
Add a second?
Second.
Dr. Yotis, if you could just explain this a little?
Absolutely. This is a memorandum of understanding that was to form between our legal counsel and April Park's legal counsel. And basically, it's taking current legislation, so it's not, it's not writing anything new. It's basically current legislation, and to make you aware of the legislation. Basically, for K-8 schools, there's kind of a niche population throughout the state of K-8 schools, it allows those students in K-8 schools that are not offered an athletic opportunities. For example, schools that do not have an athletic program, or perhaps that the school didn't offer that program, they can play at one of their feeder high schools. Now, some K-8 schools might feed into one high school. We feed into, well, five, but four that offer athletic programs. So, it could be, it's kind of a two-pronged legislation. One is, for example, if a child wanted to play football, but we didn't offer football, they can play football at the, whatever level they were able to try out for and actually make the team as well. So, they have to go through athletic classification. Transportation is on the owner of the families. So, those are things that are kind of ironed out in this piece as well. Also, it does allow for, because we don't have JV and varsity levels, if a child didn't want to try out for that team, they could, obviously, they still have to make the team. Obviously, they have to make tryouts in those pieces, not a guaranteed admission. But of course, the key to that is they have to commit to that high school to attend. So, for example, a child couldn't jump from, so April Park, basically, what we're spelling out is taking that legislation, which is already in print, that says, if a child selected to attend April Park because, a child selects to play for April Park, let's say JV basketball, they try out, they make the team, and they're not cut. The commitment is they're staying at April Park. If they did leave that high school, though, they have one year of athletic ineligible. So, meaning a child could just bounce around each high school to find an athletic opportunity. They have to commit to that high school, or if they move, they have to basically be benched for one year. So, it's kind of some safeguards to protect a child from basically, you know, school choice, but also, it's to show some accountability if that child is going to commit to that program, they are staying there. So, basically, this kind of takes that legislation and just outlines how we would handle that situation if it did arise here at GD. Now, we have a very fruitful modified program that we want to promote, but again, it also outlines that, you know, akin to the legislation, the child has to pass what's called the Athletic Classification Process. That is a very, very, very rigid process as well. So, again, while we, a few times, it might take away from our program, the child also has to pass that, and also make the team as well. Remember, they're also going against their own students in that, in that field. So, it kind of is, like I said, a niche population, but it is to afford students that opportunity to quote-unquote "play up." But of course, we outline in here, the transportation would be on the burden of the family, or the onus of the family, so it's not a burden to the district, those things. So, you see, we outline this here. The goal would be to pass this and then use this as a model with the other three districts so that if a child attends Tamrac, Columbia, or Troy, that we have a similar kind of set of standards.
So, so with this, is, because this is between us and April Park, does this mean just our home students? Does this exclude Little Red students from being covered under this contract? Would they have to have a contract between Little Red and that high school?
Excellent question. While the legislation would theoretically cover them in terms of their own arrangement, they would have to have their own contract, correct? Because this is speaking specifically to Garter Dickinson residents and how we would handle that. Avril Park, of how they would handle transportation, how they would handle this. Now, again, most of this is on the burden of the, the high school for, in terms of the athletic classification process or selection process, the tryouts. But yeah, they would have to form their own memorandum, which I would suggest they probably should.
Any other questions, comments?
Just on item three, it talks about the EPP, but also talks about, you know, Avril Park in this instance, their requirements. Is it, what, are those like grade, does it take into consideration, like does Avril Park say they have to maintain a certain level of grade point average or anything like that?
They, great question. They do not have that as a specific policy, but they do, for example, required physicals, things like that. So that's kind of, I believe, referring to that. But as far as I know, they do not have like a certain, if you're failing X number of subjects, you can't.
So you mean something that we can put in place? So it's, you know, not only theirs but ours, like, you know, I guess prioritize education, that they maintain, you know, a level of education?
Absolutely.
Yeah, the other thing I thought of, and this may be along the same lines where we might have to have our own district, you know, policy is we go till 3:20, high schools get out at 2:00. So do they miss Bandon for us?
Which they would, they would.
Yeah, I don't know.
No.
I don't know when they're practicing. They might practice late. I'm just throwing it out there.
No, you raised a question. They would, in essence, and that would be something where we have to.
So, I don't know where that goes, but that doesn't have anything to do with this.
Right.
I understand that, but just something to be thinking about for the future when we get our first student.
So we have, and if it helps, though, we have some, because you know, there's a lot of kind of soft language too, like, you know, at the discretion of the superintendent or in consultation. So for example, if we had a particular student that was very interested in this, but they were failing three subjects, that perhaps could be a conversation with the family, us, and the district of, okay, listen, we're kind of concerned. You want to try out for JV basketball, but right now you're failing three out of four subjects. At this point, we don't recommend that you do that. And I think, I'm guessing that coach would probably take into consideration as well as their performance ability as well. And also, again, like you said, the practice times, I can almost guarantee, they probably don't align, most of the time, high schools get out earlier with our ninth period day, and that would be, of course, something in the council of, okay, in order to do this and the parent would be responsible for transportation, you would be missing part of eighth and ninth period every day, which again, is a graded class regardless. So there would be some impact. So again, obviously.
Depending on which school you chose.
Right.
Troy gets out at three or something, so, you know, but just want to throw that out there.
What is the point of the eligibility provision here?
In the, I'm sorry?
If a student, let's say, from Gardner-Dickinson plays JV at Avril Park and then decides to go to a different school when they get to ninth grade, they're not allowed to play in ninth grade.
They want a strong commitment to that program.
Their kid.
Yeah.
Right.
That's what they're asking for.
The legislation.
What if, what if what he gets out of.
That wasn't written in the legislation.
Yeah.
That was part of the legislation.
That we don't have to adopt for our memorandum. And I think it's worth talking about.
I was going to ask, what if they just move out of our district? Does that hurt their eligibility?
What if they go and play JV or even varsity and have a horrible time at Avril Park and decide to go somewhere else? It's a, it's a complicated penalty, and we're not sure what they're violating here.
And it's one of those unique situations where basically, like you said, it, there's so many case-by-case, basically, like you said, or if the child moves, okay, they suddenly are in eighth grade and they move to Saratoga, Troy.
Yeah. Because it's a feeder district.
Feeder district, exactly.
As an example, I mean, do they have to pay the price because the family moved for whatever reason?
And those are the cases where I would hope, and I'm, again, this being new legislation, which is actually going to be exciting to see how that unfolds, you, in a perfect world, you'd hope not. You'd hope that'd be one of those kind of, okay, here's a unique situation, you know, for example, a great point. A child has a horrific experience of playing JV soccer at Avril Park, they go to Avril Park freshman year and they decide they're, they can't, they don't want to stay, you know. One of the things, Mrs. Murphy and I work together, is even when students move high schools regardless, we always have a meeting in council because we try to advise students not to move high schools a lot because really, it's not something we feel solid for their transitions and things like that. But if it happened, we'd hopefully work that out. If there was, if that child happened to be, I hate to say case-by-case basis, but if the child happened to be also, you know, requiring a certain move, we have that conversation anyway. And then I guess the athletic piece of, well, I still want to be eligible for sports, it would kind of come into play of, well, how do we handle this, you know?
I thought they only had to commit to ninth grade. It's for all four years?
I think just for ninth grade, right? They'd have to, if they, right, if they commit to ninth grade and then if they moved, if they.
After ninth grade, they're free, right?
Right.
They're free agents after ninth. That's the way I understood it, but.
Yeah, but if they go seventh grade and they play, right, JV.
So they play JV in eighth grade.
And then they move, and then they go to Troy or wherever, right?
I'm not thinking about the move, I'm just thinking about if, like, let's say they don't move, they play eighth grade, they hate the kids or whatever, they don't like them. So they have to commit to ninth grade to that school.
Or, or lose a year of.
But once they go to ninth, through ninth grade there, then they can switch to any school and their sports eligibility is fine, right? Okay, so I want to make sure I understood it.
I think that, again, I'm totally guessing. I think the point of that caveat was to prevent people from, and this has been an issue with athletics for years, of families moving districts purely to gain a spot in a varsity team, you know?
Well, I kind of don't blame, you know, the.
Right, you know, moving.
High school districts that here, they put all this money and energy into our eighth grader. I don't blame them for wanting a year commitment, I'm sorry.
Years ago, the biggest thing was, you know, families, you know, taking residents with like an uncle, for example, in a different district purely to play varsity football. And they really weren't living there, but it was suddenly they were transferred, and then they stayed the year, they were covered in the team, they moved. I think these are.
Right.
Safeguards, but there's always that piece, I'm guessing.
And they're taking a spot away from an Avril Park kid, so.
If, if they make it, right.
If they make it, yeah. So I don't blame them for wanting, you know, a one-year commitment.
I'm not ready for that. I mean, can we table this so we can, I mean, we can keep talking about it now, but I want to think about it and the legislation like that.
I think, I think one thing I'm concerned about, too, is what if, what if we have an eighth grader who plays up to JV, and then for whatever reason, for budget reasons, they have to cut JV the next year, there's no team for them to play on, they can't go to a different high school because they've lost their eligibility for a year.
Well, that might be an exception.
I mean.
Should we document that exception?
There, something to think about, by the way.
Well, that would be a violation, maybe.
You know, you might be, just to throw it out to the board, you might be able to, because again, one of the pieces is when, when Avril Park approached us with this, obviously this is something they're very nervous about because they kind of approached us with, we want to have something in place, so if this comes to fruition, we're not having a, an argument over transportation of, well, so-and-so transports, so should you transport? And I will say, that's one piece I am worried about because I want to make sure that we're not, we don't have the resources to be transporting kids to five different schools for practice. So we have to at some point because we just can't do that. So I don't want us ever being a pickle of, well, it doesn't say you wouldn't, and so-and-so jurisdiction does. So that's one piece I would say, at some point, I'd want to act on sooner or later only for our own protection. So it wasn't, if this does get, and again, it's legislation in place right now, so it could be challenged tomorrow. But you also could add something, just to throw it out there, and I could run this by and it's just something to think about, but you don't have to commit. You also could add a number 10 that says, you know, specific situations that are outside of, you know, current circumstances will be considered on a case-by-case basis by both superintendents. Something that kind of is like a, you know, what if a kid moves in, leaves, has, you know, these kind of what-ifs situations, does it give us some room to, you know, just an idea?
I don't think that's enough for me. I mean, I, I'm not, I get it, but, I mean, if a kid wanted to move around for a better science program or a better math program or better sports program, I get it. I mean, I'm not sure why we would. I don't think the high school's investment in a seventh or eighth grader playing up is so big to penalize them later if they change the circumstance because they're kids.
Oh, you raise, you raise a great point. I think the question the board might want to think about is that regardless of whether we do this or not, the legislation still will outweigh, it's just a matter of whether we have something in place so that if a student says.
The law's been.
You know, I need, I hate to go back to transportation, my thing is just, my fear is, listen, I'm, I'm.
But the law doesn't, does the law require all school districts to allow students from middle schools to play up?
K-8 districts.
Well, then why do we need this?
This was just more to safeguard the procedures between, so like, our procedure with Avril Park and, basically, they wanted to protect the safe, the procedures, so meaning, okay, we want to make sure that we lock in. So 99% of this is redone, it's kind of regurgitating the legislation. The piece that I had asked them to change, as you're aware, was the transportation piece because at one point it said would be provided by, this is a standard form, I think, that this particular law firm is using with other districts, and they had transportation would be provided by the district. And that's one piece I said, well, that's not, that's just something we can't do. We can't, we, you know. So yeah, it's some, it is kind of one of those, it's almost like policy in a way. The, the regulation is outweighing the policy. I think Avril Park just wanted something in place that outlined, you know, so if this is brought, we have, they have a series of steps that basically outline the legislation. But again, all new, this was as of, I believe, St. July 1st. This is new. This is all very, you know, the legislation, this piece, we certainly can table it, and I can let Avril Park know that we need some more time. I just, I might ask you guys to think about what you need more time for because obviously the more time we think about it, I want to make sure that we, we know what we're adding, you know, just so we're not in a situation where while we're pondering, we're now transporting three or four students out of eighth and ninth period because there's not, you know.
Are we reacting on this?
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying, you might want to think about, if you don't, what you, what your next step would be like. We can act on, we certainly don't have to rush on.
It's on the table. I, we motioned in second and then started discussing, so it's on the table. Is that what you're asking?
No.
That we're taking action?
I think he's asking if we're in a situation where somebody wants to play.
Oh, 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 okay.
Is that what you're.
Yeah, are we transport, do we have kids playing up right now?
No.
Right.
At present, we don't, or anyone that's, you know.
Because they probably don't know yet. But after this board meeting. We're just kidding.
I mean, obviously, we're ending one season, so obviously with basketball season beginning November-ish, you know, just one of those. I think that's what sparked Avril Park to say, I think we need to get something in writing so we're not just looking at a, you know, a region's proposal online and saying, so how do you want to handle this? Okay, shall we have your physician do it or our, no, our, you know, the Avril Park physician does, that kind of stuff. So again, no rush on it.
We don't have three sports.
Where I've seen issues with.
With good points.
With this is the criteria, right? If that's gray, I've seen that really destroy organizations, right? If it's not clear if I can play up or not, to the point where you can get sued, right? People can bring, why are, why is person A versus person B? So I, I'm worried about that. I'm also worried about what it's going to do to our athletic program. Because I know the girls' soccer team has one sub on that soccer team, and there's probably two players that could probably play up. Those two players go, nine girls suffer from not being able to have the opportunity to play soccer here at Gardner-Dickinson versus two go being able to, you know, advance an athletic career. So I, I'd really like to see, maybe it's a, a policy, as you mentioned, maybe it's a, a parallel policy from our side that also puts some criteria in there to kind of safeguard a little bit of what we want, what we have as far as our values of maintaining a certain grade level and other things like that to take into consideration to be approved, to be able to play up. I just, I find this legislation crazy in a time of concussions and injury, and now we have young kids coming up and playing up. I still get it, but I'm an oddball, I'll say.
And I'm not clear really if we can do that, you know what I mean? I don't know if we can do that.
Well, that's probably a great.
It's open, yeah, the legislation's not going.
And we stop somebody from doing it based on the law and what?
Well, I guess that, that's probably a great question, and certainly if, again, we can certainly, you know, pull it back and table it. I mean, I, if I have kind of a tangible direction to go, perhaps that's the next question is, I could inquire, do we have, that's a great question, what if we did set our own athletic, we can set our own athletic code of conduct, which actually we approve in September for our own pieces, but that's a great question. So if students say, so that's great, but that is, that's the GD athletic code of conduct, I'd like to play, but, you know, can, can our own code or can an own piece, you know, override if a school, does that make sense? Like, can our own expectations override legislations? So that's, that's great, but I have the right to try out for the team, and if I make the team, I get to play on the team. You can't say, well, you have to, I'm curious the answer.
I'm curious, too.
And it's probably very, it's still very new territory, which is very.
And then what if they don't make the team and they come back? Do they want a spot on the GD team? And then what happens to the bottom player that made the team?
Well, I'm well for no cuts, so.
I know you are, which is good.
You know, I feel about that.
I'll take 22 to the court.
That's right. And you could do it, too. I have confidence. You could work with 22 kids on a basketball court.
So, if I'm hearing you all correctly, dude, I'll take some direction here, so I imagine you want to pull it off the table, at least.
Yeah, we'll table it.
But, so what information would you, because obviously, going back to Avril Park, I want to make sure I'm not going back saying, well, we need more time, and then November comes, we have to. So we need, I think the first piece is, can we, right, I'm hearing, can we kind of enforce our own criteria, or is this legislation meant to, no, that's independent, you know, almost like trying out or playing up is basically the athletic classification, that, and that's the piece. What other pieces are, we kind of?
Yeah, and we come back in, very quickly in November, right?
Oh, sure. But I mean, certainly, we can add, I mean, if there's something that you feel like you need more, it's kind of substantial, it's like other pieces that you'd like to even look into, I'd be happy to, so.
And I wouldn't mind waiting for Kathy to say.
Keep their pieces.
I want to look at it and I'll get back to that.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, it's fine. It's just, my recommendation would be that we do act in November just so that if we get into the season, we're not in this kind of, and actually, the goal would be also, whatever you decide on, I'd like us to use as a template with the other four, except we still, or another three districts. We have other three districts that could have a separate set of, so the more standardized, I think, so that we're not, well, East Greenberg said we could do this, or, you know.
If you're making a list, I want to know more about ineligible.[1466.83]
that could have a separate set of, sort of, the more standardized, I think, so that we're not doing, well, East Greenwood said we could do this, or, you know.
If you're making a list, I want to know more about ineligible. I think there's too many ifs, ands, or whats.
Meaning that year off?
Yes, yes. You know, if they move.
And clarify that it's just ninth grade.
Yeah.
Can you confirm that it's just ninth?
Absolutely.
And do we want to ask, would they be willing to take that off the table? Because I think that's, I mean, if they took that off the table, that would, I think, clear a lot of things up for all of those questions, right? Because then you don't have to start diving into the minutia of-
Right, right. And we keep saying JV, too, there's freshman teams.
Oh, freshmen, yes.
Yes.
So what I'll, actually, so, and that's a great question of, is that something we can take off the table? I don't have the answer. Or is that truly the legislation? Meaning, it's not, you know, they want it, so schools can't say, well, we'll waive this, but then out in Greenwood Lake, they're saying, no. You know, so is that standardized, or is it something negotiable? Great question. And Keith, you'll do your own, kind of?
Yeah.
I don't want to put you on the spot, Keith, but how long do you think it'll take for you to get back to it?
We can't get that back to us.
Not long.
Okay, just like a week?
Yeah.
Perfect.
No, it's better to have this in perfection, because again, this, once we do this, this would be what I would send to the other three and say, let's go. And then obviously, hopefully, they have faith in us and say, okay, well.
So do we need a motion to table this agenda item?
Yeah, just to be clear, in the legislation, they can't participate in any sport.
You have it there.
Any sport, any level.
Any, in, any interscholastic athletic contest for one year. So they can't, so if they tried out for soccer, they can't play basketball.
So that's in the legislation?
That's in the legislation.
So meaning, what legislation, if they went to, from Avila Park to Troy, they couldn't even play freshman or modified?
Yeah, they can't, they're out for all schools.
Whatever.
But we may be able to get Avila Park to waive that, is what you're thinking? To not, to allow them to play at Troy.
If there's an agreement, when I, and hey, I'm not a lawyer. That's why we're looking at Keith and. But yeah, if they're, if both school districts are in agreement of, well, I guess you would have to have that among multiple. I guess it would have to be, because we're in a situation where it's five, or whatever.
They all together for each other.
Everybody's got to say, yeah, that's all, that's all of it.
Well, that might be, that might be where the answer comes in of, can we, but then of course, Avila Park might say, sure, and East Greenwood says, no, absolutely, no, you're not jumping over here and jumping on a, you know, so perhaps there's, I'm curious now. Keith, your expertise is, can, can local outweigh-
I haven't looked at the law yet, but if what that law says is that the student is not eligible as a matter of law to play interscholastic sports, if they violate this rule, then there's not much we can do about waiving that.
So local, yeah.
I mean, I, it depends on how it's written, but that's why I kind of look at it.
Sure, absolutely. It's new, it's very new.
Yeah, I was hoping something like that's in there.
And was, yeah, that's the thing. You just said a caveat at the end, you're, you know.
Can we see what kind of standards we can apply to, to this as well? I'd like to see if we can do that, and if it's multiple.
So actually, I'm going to phrase it as, can we apply standards?
Yeah.
Like, can, do we have the powers to, well, you know, grades or-
And if they're going to miss classes, how many classes they can miss?
Well, should those standards be, because we could formulate those and send them over and say, ask whether they're acceptable.
Definitely. For me, it's, how are you doing, you know, your performance at school and, it's more of a privilege to play sports than a, than a requirement to get your degree up. More like graduating, thank you.
How, just to simplify, if I may.
You don't have to graduate, so I hear what you're saying.
I think, because we have our own set of qualifications and our own GD athletic handbook, which we follow, so probably rather than reinventing new standards to apply, when we currently have, how about we find out, can we apply our own standards of, you must be passing all your classes?
Yeah.
You know, I think, I know, tends is referenced in the policy, doesn't give a solid number, but can those apply before a child could electorally stay? Or is it, no, that's your policy versus, you know, is it two different languages, or can our language carry over?
Right, the high schools must have policy, too.
Then who conducts the APP? Is that clear?
The high school.
That, it says a high, I believe it says, then the-
The high school, it says that?
The high school would, they're, the respective high school.
Okay.
Okay, I motion to table the memorandum of understanding between Rollinsville Union Free School District and Avila Park Central School District. Mr. Herakawa?
Yep.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yeah.
Mrs. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
And I heard four questions, and I will reach out to said council, and-
Good, thank you. Okay. 3.5, approval of substitutes. We have a few here. Custodian Neil Benassi and Jacob Nolan, teacher's aide and non-certified teacher Savannah Mason, Robert Lautz, Leah Shire, Alexandra Vincent, and then in the kitchen, Jacob Nolan. I'm going to make a motion.
Motion.
And the second.
Second.
Questions? Discussion?
Mr. Herakawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.6, whereas the district accepted a preliminary SMART School Investment Plan on September 21, 2017 pursuant to the SMART Schools Bond Act, the ACT, and whereas the preliminary SSIP is posted on the district's website for at least 30 days, and the district included an address to which any written comments on the preliminary SSIP should be sent, and whereas the Board of Education conducted a public hearing that enabled stakeholders to respond to the preliminary SSIP for which adequate notice of the public hearing was provided through local media and the district website for at least two weeks prior to the hearing, and whereas the Board of Education has considered all public comments, completed a final SSIP, and determined that the approval of the final SSIP is in the best interest of the district. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the final SMART Schools Investment Plan to expend $119,744 for the upgrade to the video security monitoring system and classroom communication, and $75,722 to upgrade the computer network infrastructure for a total expenditure of $195,466, as more fully described in the district plan, is hereby approved. Do you want me to make a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion?